Either way, lighter way or.
Yeah, I know. All right, if you would please rise. I've asked Mike Burns, fifty church to come and open us in prayers that.
Want to thank the commissioners court and thank you judge for allowing us to have the national day of prayer. Very special for us and thank you. Heavenly father, we thank you as we open up the court in prayer today, we come for you. You're the Lord and the God of all wisdom and guidance. So as these men, this court and these citizens, as we as part of this county, today meet together today to fishy the business of our county, we just ask your help and guidance leadership. We know what we know, we do what we can do as human beings, but we as people who trust God, we trust for you to give us wisdom and guidance. Thank you for the court. Thank you for these men that are elected to this court that help us guide us in our county. Thank you to the citizens out here at the gallery that we in order today submit unto you and we submit unto this court today. Thank you for the business. Thank you for your blessings today on this place and in this courthouse. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right. Well, it's to the American in the Texas fight, American fight. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one. All right, you may be seated. I will call this meeting to order at nine oh one. We do have a quorum present. All of the commissioners are here and myself. So are there any general announcements? Ninety voters yesterday, okay, for the first day of early voting. Okay, all right.
Okay, I want to remind everybody of the Memorial Day, the Van Zandt County Veterans Memorial Board is sponsoring the Memorial Day event. Will be at the Memorial at two forty three and nineteen. Everybody's welcome to come.
What time? Ten AM?
Be a ten AM.
Okay, very good. And I'd like to remind everybody to turn your cell phones off, ringers off, good please. But do we have any public comments? Anybody signed up for public comments? No public comments. All right, we will move on to item number four. Consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered routine by the commissioners court will be enacted one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item be removed or content agenda considered separately. Is there any items to discuss?
Uh, yeah, sure. I'd like to pull line item transfers and then I'd like to make a comment on the monthly reports.
All right. Do you like to make your monthly report comments?
Yeah, we we received all of our April reports from myself and I'm sure the rest of this court. Like to say thank you to all those that submitted those reports.
Okay, very good. All right. Would you like to pull item number D, discuss their approval of fiscal year twenty twenty four line item transfers? What would you like?
I'd like to, uh, just for I I have investigated it, but there's a line item transfer on there where we're moving money from salaries to other things. And it was this court's decision when we built our budget last year that that would not happen. We would never move money from excess money from salaries to other things, but this is is an exception. And I don't know if the sheriff wants to explain it or if you want me to explain it, uh, what's going on on our. But I'll 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 explain the to let everyone know that's listening on YouTube and hear, uh, that is the money's being moved is from, we're short as always on staff at the sheriff's office. We received a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state of Texas. We put all of that grant towards salaries and anticipating that we would have full staff, but we don't. And that that grant can be used for things other than salaries. It can be used for salaries or it can be used for equipment such as patrol squad car. Well, we're short of salaries and we're coming down to the deadline on this money. We're either going to have to relocate this money to buy equipment with it instead of salaries, or we're going to refund it to the state of Texas. So it's good catch on the sheriff's department and the auditor's department. If we don't relocate that money, we're going to lose it. So we're taking that, I can't remember now, fifty eight or fifty three thousand somewhere, fifty three thousand. We're moving it from salaries to equipment for the sheriff to purchase a new car. So that's that's just clarification to all the people that are listening to us.
All right. And Sheriff, do you want to explain why we're, what what happened as far as?
We had two horrible vehicles we're getting right now coming in, they're moving on. We had places ordered back like mayor already June last year. We got an idea of what they'll see if they come in. They do, uh, governmental program, put a manufacturer to, what's it called? They're over the price of the vehicles. Well, they sell them less than price of what they would sell them normally in retail. The price of these vehicles being in at the price we felt they could last year was playing a budget was even at this year, I believe seventy thousand dollars per unit. More expensive. They cut their pricing out of the middle of the stall here also. So we're paying fifty five, we're looking at these things being thirty five, thirty eight thousand for the base vehicles. These vehicles came in at fifty five. Fifty five dollars even that without adding radios, siren, red lights, video cameras, court cameras.
And we originally ordered ten, correct? And then they they came back in their.
Open only quarter ten of these vehicles. We have vehicles that are, we have vehicles back two thousand nine that are still running. Uh, Rodney, we get five vehicles that are down. The number fluctuates today that we have five vehicles that are down, out of service, they're being repaired. So we have to swap people out of one vehicle with another to keep them rolling. And two or three vehicles about two thousand nine. Two thousand nine, we have two thousand sixteen car will also repair. Two thousand eighteen is prepared. So we're looking a little bit, well, six years old, working on seven, down the county roads, high mileage. The call for repair is asked on, because we have to use, I told her to order ten instead of five, the person would be prepared to pay for them. They call us November and let us know that I ordered ten, we got cut to three, our allocation. So we don't order five, ask for ten, get cut to three. We got vehicles in, we got a couple of special vehicles up here. And I'd like to say somewhat in the future, we can repair the premises a little quicker and keep them in correspondence with the repair cost form. And the costs we're talking are one or none.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Is that is that all you have on the transfers? All right. Now that we've discussed that item, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Say it. All right. All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss consider approval of the audit report for fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty twenty three presented by Patillo Brown and Hill LLP from Waco, Texas. Here. All right. Good morning.
Morning Judge.
Morning.
My name is Travis Rogers, the manager and product supervisor. So I'm just here to explain the share of the results of the fiscal year twenty twenty three audit. Late last week, Judge Reese and Sandy and myself and John and the audit partner on the pre- audit page of the county did a vote via teams called the hour fifteen minute long sleep. So that means I think for a bit of everybody here, I'm trying to update that just a little bit and focus on the higher points. But if anyone has any question or comments or anything, definitely. Let me group of store first at the very beginning of page one.
We're looking at the audit report, not the letter, right? Okay.
Page one of the annual financial report. Let's go to page one. Obviously, this is the independent auditors report, which we've all seen it prior years, which basically is about three pages long, contains some lot of standardized language about our responsibility of asking counties outside auditors to audit and deliver an opinion on these financial statements, also on the responsibility of the county's management for the preparation and very presentation of these financial statements, all that fun stuff. But most important critical part, let's see at the very top of page one, right under report on the audit of financial statements under opinions. The second paragraph down where it ends with, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements presented fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position. And the changes in financial position adds up and for the year end, September thirty of twenty twenty three. All that basically means that's what we call an unmodified or a hidden opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we're able to render on the county's financial statements as the outside auditors. Basically means as a result of all of our audit work, all of our testing, going through looking at cash and best months, receiving all those payables, all the assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures, and all of our, as a result of all our testing, no material departments, particularly except accounting is one of that. So like I said, unmodified or hidden opinion on this level of assurance we provide on these financial statements. Financial one, very quick highlight to point out as we're looking through on page eleven. The paper let up begins the double bond financial statements, which includes the county's general. One word number to point out here, you can see down towards the bottom of page one in a fine side of bond balance. So unsigned essentially the amount of bond balance in the general fund as of year end, that has to go internal or external distribution, place on its use. So available for the county to spend upon its operations as it's built. That number as of September thirty of twenty twenty three was about ten point four million. We compare that to the expenditures of the general fund for the year on page fourteen. Just a little over fifteen million for the year. So one is a split number to talk of as far as days or months in five hours. That's roughly just a hair over eight months for the expenditures of general fund. Not assigned five ballots. The classic rule thought is shoot four around three to six months minimum if possible. So if you're maintaining around eight to nine months, it was a very not assigned five dollars. That's what we were calling healthy five dollars. It's one of, it's definitely, this is definitely not excessive in way, it's not, the word way is not indicative of any any concerns in either direction. Couple other things, let's look back. On page fifty nine. Couple more of those letters towards the back of the report is just like. This compare is simply a summary and explanation of our requirements as your outside auditors and what is going on, auditing standards, you know, so it's any audit that's stable or comfortable, or we're reporting to those standards, we have to consider and document as part of our audit. Government laws, regulations, grant agreements, on products, things about which are not compliant with the requirements to be on there on the high level of the papers. If there was any such noncompliance with the described and disclosed here, thankfully there is not to report for this year twenty twenty three. So they could just the kind of standard of plain Jane letter describing those requirements based on those standards. Have one more letter following on page six and gone. As the very first, well, it's our opinion on the county's financial statements. This letter is a describing our opinion on the county's compliance with federal grant requirements, essentially entities that can spend several fifty thousand dollars or more of federal funding during any given year, the subject and a federal single audit. If we go ahead, essentially select grant programs based on their size or another list factors and tests. Test didn't, first month, like baiting, giving, presenting payroll, employee costs, COVID, those rights, anything like that, and test those for, are they allowable under the terms of the I have and the federal guidelines, and I say a level of made in control of those programs, this this first month, funded for every week. So same as before, a second paragraph down from the top on page sixty one. In our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements, which are two above. So essentially same as before on the county's financial statements, there is an unmodified or hidden opinion. Maybe as a result of that, federal single audit, no noncompliance or question costs, or you think about nature or no, that's a result of that. Curious, those federal expenditures are broken out and listed on page sixty four. And on page sixty fifth, the page four, that break down the summary of the results of that audit and any opinions and findings, et cetera, possibly. Unmodified or hidden and no findings, filed or settled. Just a very quickly summarize, unmodified or hidden opinion on the financial statements. The same unmodified or hidden opinion on federal single audit and looking at county board study of about eight months working, federal fund expenditures and bond balance as of the end of this year twenty twenty three. So that was the quick readers digest for you. Uh, thinking about some kind of version, what we subject the judge and Sandy to last week. It's a clear weather, it's on the side of the lights. Anyone has any questions or comments, et cetera. Well, here going back there.
But I just would like to say that I thank you for your your report, but it, I don't. The reason why we have a good report is because of our auditor and her staff. They do an incredible job keeping keeping everything in mind, keeping us in mind, I guess you might say. So.
Yes, sir. One hundred percent sanity for entire staff, everyone here in the county we work with. Almost all we work with, almost two hundred gone, all of the news around state. You guys are very, very easy to work with. Everyone's really, we like to work hard to get us everything and answer our questions. Right? Everyone who seems like every year, everyone who works with the the county on audits, remarks, man, everyone that has that captain's just on the wall, you know, their stuff, they're writing for us and we very much appreciate it. It's, if that makes our the obvious, you can say, uh, get in, get out, and we'll move on now. So you're very much.
So do we get a discount because of that?
I would like to know on which match.
Okay, do that. No problem. All right. You don't have any questions?
Job well done.
Good job, Sandy. Thank you. You're in your group. All right. Thank you, Travis. We appreciate it. All right. Is there a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty twenty three? So maybe. Most remain saying, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider extending disaster declaration of May sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, for those of you don't know, made a disaster declaration due to the rainy weather that has occurred in our county and we've had a significant damage to bridges and roads. Uh, the reason why that I made the disaster declaration is that uh, we have the potential to be able to get assistance in repairs. Uh, but the governor made the the declaration and he in fact extended it again today uh, for the rainstorms that started on April twenty sixth and have continued on. In a, in order for us to be eligible for that, you know, once the governor does it, the county has to do it too. And then then we can be eligible for the assistance if we meet a certain threshold. That threshold is roughly two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So if the if the commissioners find in their work and they can document the the amount of damages and what it costs us to repair and we exceed the two seventy five, then we can apply for assistance from the the government, the state in that regard. So what, when I signed the declaration last week, uh, it's only good for seven days. That's that is the longest it it's good for in in order for us to continue it. And this is what the governor did is doing is we have to uh, vote on whether or not to extend it for another thirty days.
Yeah, and also the state had to reach a threshold too. Before we can get anything.
Okay.
State, I think their threshold is a hundred and fifty nine million. So they had to, when they reached their threshold, then if we reach our threshold, then we're we're we can maybe get some money from.
There's about fifty counties that were named in the disaster and I know there's some south of us that had significant flooding damage in that regard. So.
To be safe, I I motion to extend, Judge.
All right, for thirty days?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's a motion to extend the disaster declaration by sixteen and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. So I'll I'll work up the extension declaration. Item number seven, discuss consider allowing the purchase of a ticket printer for precinct three constable using justice court technology funds pursuant to code of criminal procedure article one oh two point zero one seven three. Okay, who's this? Oh, Scott.
Good one.
Good morning.
Constable Kaufman asked me about this and we decided we had Sandy about it, it was used with technology funds. He asked Judge Dunn, so Judge Dunn approved it. Sandy said it's okay. Y'all said it's okay. And then Jeff asked Tommy, precinct one, if he wanted to. And we got a email from Judge Bill and saying it's me for the expenditure from technology funds. So we get at that one, actually do both. Y'all heard that.
I don't know that we can add to that agenda item.
Uh.
Can we?
Yes. Okay.
I'm not saying we can't do it, but we can't add it.
This is the fifth for a precinct, right? We can come back next and meet and approve on time.
Yes, it's supposed to change.
What's that do? Just they automatically print the ticket out?
While they're in the car. And everything's logged through some software and tracked completely right into there and we ship straight over. Saves a lot of time and effort.
What, and this is, this is one of their particular fines that that, no.
Is there justice support bank funds and it was funded by a four dollar charge on each ticket for the proof. But it says in there that if you can only use by the justice court, but if the court allows the a constable can use it as long as it's a technology enhancement. So we feel like the ticket driver did enhancement because by now the writing name of ticket say a lot of trouble reading the name of the ticket. So.
I like a motion with.
Say it. All right, motion been made in second. Hold on a second. And my suggestion is when we come back, just include all the constables and in the next motion. And that way we don't have to, if they want them, it's it's approved. So. All right, motion made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Scott. Item number eight, discuss and consider acceptance of a survey of the south boundary line of Van Zandt County precinct two barn property. You need time in here?
Uh, maybe not.
Just do business.
Yeah, just go ahead, just for
like, you want to give us a synopsis of what what we're.
I can when all that time. Okay, this is a measure to judge. This is a survey uh, of the county's property in precinct two and be the south boundary line. We've never, we've never fenced that in. It's always been been the county property. It's always been, been the county property, but we've never fenced it in. And we've had a new survey to, to mark it, mark the line, and it's, it's been padded, I think. It's in our binder. Uh, we want to fence this off and create a new area before we can store uh, material and also uh, equipment. And uh, it's, I don't think there's, there could be some problems with, with the, with our neighbors on the south side. Since they've used the county's property for several years to get into their uh, property. But we, we intend to leave them a right away, a thirty foot right away uh, when we fence it off so they can get into their property. But just want to bring that up just in case. I think Tonda, our district attorney has looked at it and also her assistant has looked at it, Zach. And we're, we're legally, we're, we're good, but want to bring it to the court's attention. Do you have anything to say, Tonda?
No, I was just gonna add that the only provision is that we cannot block them from ingress and egress to their property. We can't landlot them, but as long as we leave the, that open. We're then watch to fence it off.
Okay.
So uh, I make a motion that we accept the survey for the South Boundary Line of Van Zet County Precinct two barn property.
Second, motion been made in seconds.
Do you need to date, do you need to say the date of that survey so in, in time, future, we'll know what survey we're accepting?
We can use a, well, we can use today's date as the, I'm not sure exactly when that survey, it was done a couple of weeks ago.
It's May eighth, May one fourth on here.
Okay.
Just.
May, may that one fourth.
Survey number.
I, I'll let the survey that speak for itself. It's, it's in the binder and will be uh, in the county clerk's office on file.
Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider awarding Roden Bridge materials bids for delivered on SSM, ASPM and CPR dash four. Uh, the contract period of May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Morning Judge, morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, this was a, this particular product, we did not have any bids during our normal, uh, year bid. So we did go out for, we redid this, these items and we received a bid from Texas Materials. And did it make your binder?
Mm-hmm, it's indeed.
Um, precinct one, precinct three and precinct four receive bids for the delivered products. We could just have your approval of these bids this morning and they will become a part of your Roden Bridge. I'm sure it.
Right, is there a motion to uh, award this bid?
So move person.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Uh, item number ten, discuss, consider approval of bond for Sandy Hill County Otter and the amount of five thousand dollars payable for the district judge. There a motion?
I'll motion.
So move, uh, second.
All right, motion made in second, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider renewal of the bond for the deputy treasurer, April to water for five thousand dollars for the term beginning June eighth, twenty twenty-four and ending June eighth, twenty twenty-five. There a motion to accept this?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider renewal of the bond for chief deputy treasurer, Irma Hayes, for five thousand dollars for the beginning, term beginning June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, ending June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So move person.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider moving to July seventeenth, Commissioner Court meeting date due to a lack of a quorum. Uh, the suggested new meeting date is Thursday, July the eleventh at nine AM.
Okay, why are we not going to have a quorum on?
Because that's the North and East Texas County Judge and Commissioners Conference.
Got you. Okay, so we'll move it to the eighteenth.
The conference is the whole week.
Okay.
So moving it within the week is not, it's from the fifteenth to the eighteenth.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion there, we, we move it.
To?
Thursday, July the eleventh.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second person.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. All right, we will now move into a closed, two closed executive sessions. The first is compliance with section five five one dash zero seven one of the Texas Government Code to seek the advice of its attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or consultation with its attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney client privilege. And then the second executive session is in compliance with section five five one point zero seven two five of the state of Texas Government Code to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. So we will now exit our regular meeting at nine thirty-four and.